There you go.
Mary. It's not working.
Hey, baby.
It's working. Go. Try to pick it up better.
Is Billy coming?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Let it go.
Just to be on the safe side, let's.
Yeah.
In a few minutes and.
You're pumped, daddy.
That's all right.
Hey, look at that thing.
You're cute. You're cute.
That's what you do this weekend.
Still haven't taken a picture with him.
Yeah.
Plaid seven oh four, call to order the regular meeting here at the city council, City of Aransas Pass, six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard, October nineteen twenty fifteen at ten p.m. Please rise for the invocation. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day. We ask you to watch over us, guide us as we have our council meetings this evening. We actually use your guiding hand to watch over our citizens here of Aransas Pass. We're always grateful for all the blessings bestowed upon us. We ask you to watch over our youngsters and our future leaders of America. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're gonna bring us to item number three, presentation of proclamations of employees' recognitions. First one will be Mr. Bill Haynes for the harbor. I'm coming up.
Mayor and council wanted to let you know Gordon is a public works staffer. He's worked for the city for a good portion of time. Gordon has, is part of the new restructure of the public works department. And in that time, his supervisors have said Gordon has not only stepped up his game, but has become a mentor to the other public works employees in the organization. So we'd like to recognize Gordon with some certificates and also with a twenty-five dollar gift card to applicants to his wife's dinner.
Congratulations, Gordon. Thank you, Gordon. We can have Mr. Ricky Kilgore from the fire department.
Fire department wants to do, wants to hear Ricky has had a long service with the city of Aransas Pass also.
Wow.
Fantastic.
Even got a haircut for these.
Well, I've been doing some, I can say it's thirty-four years of fire service in St. Louis. So it's a great honor from the fire department and city manager, city staff and the police chief and all the citizens out here that support me through all the years and all the years to come. We'll figure out the town's growth. Thank you all.
Ms. Peggy Brown? Ms. Peggy Brown?
Peggy.
Our next one is Peggy. Peggy was an employee of the city for twenty-seven years and is part of the consolidation of senior services. Peggy has decided to retire, so as a token of our appreciation, we're presenting you with a very nice yellow bag and face and thank you for your service to the residents of Aransas.
Thank you.
I'm gonna lose all my senior, but I have turned into one since I've been working. So I get to do things with them now. All of them, with them.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your years of service.
This is gonna bring us to item four A, Boarding Commission Appointees. And item A will be zoning board of adjustments.
Mayor and council, there are requests to do for the zoning board adjustments. We appointments that are suggested. Lisa Barker moved her from alternate to a regular commissioner. Armando Lauxa moved from an alternate to a regular commissioner. Randall Fries appoints to an alternate commissioner. Mr. Fries has been on the commission. And Mr. Kubek appoint him also as an alternate commissioner. So the staff recommendation is to appoint all the applicants as suggested.
Do I hear a motion for approval from the council or any discussion?
Well, I make a motion that we, you know, approve the recommendation from the city staff.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye. This is gonna bring us to item five eight. Five, the citizen comments. Please limit your presentation to three minutes, state your name and your address fully. And the floor is not open for a citizen comment. On whatever you want to discuss. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pencha Kaiser. I live at seventeen forty-five South Commercial. And briefly, I would just say that I have had a problem with my property since nineteen ninety-nine. And there was some damage to it. And I've, since then, I've spoken with every council member, every mayor, every city secretary, city manager, at any rate, this country will find me last September, took care of my problem. And I really, really appreciate it because like I said, it has been sixteen years coming. And I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Well, is this one we should comment about the planning of the zoning? It's like number nine.
Yeah, that'll open a public.
That'll open up on, when we get to item nine? Yes, ma'am. Now, if anybody has anything they want to say, they have three minutes to state their business. If you've got anything you want to get off your chest, this is your time to do it.
How's everybody doing? My name's Sean Miller. I live at sixteen, what's going on? Is that better?
Hey, you're good.
My name's Sean Miller. I live at sixteen twenty-nine Wendy Oaks Drive here in Aransas Pass. I just took some time to come out here this evening just to say that I really think that the community has made a lot of big strides since the last few years. We have fireworks, free Thanksgiving dinners for the community. There's things like this never, ever took place. This town was at a dead stop. And it's finally rolling. And I just want to say thank you, city council, and thank you, city manager, for the wonderful work you do. And thank you, Chief Blanchard. I've heard several reports from different people, how the police services just, you know, really came up a lot, beautifying our city, has came up a lot. Our parks look wonderful. I just probably can't say enough good things about our city manager and about the members that we have now in place. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you. The floor is still open. If somebody would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tom Diaz DeLeon. I'm the commander of the VFW Veterans of Foreign Wars of Aransas Pass. I'd like to thank the city council, city manager, and the city staff for helping the veterans with the addition or the park, which is a veteran's park. We've never had one here in Aransas Pass. This is the first time. I'd like to thank the administration for all the continuous support you've done and given the veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything? If not, then that will close our citizen comments for this evening. We'll be moving along. This is gonna bring us to item number six, the consent agenda. All of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items six A and six B.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All affairs say aye. This is gonna bring us to item seven A, consider enacting an awarding to RFP for mowing services.
Mayor and council, item seven A through G are all city major items. So we'll start with seven A. This is round two of mowing services for our small pocket park areas. The bid was advertised for Community Park Downtown and Harbor Point Park. We had four applicants submit bids, four applicants who submitted complete bids with insurance information. The lower bid was Cornerstone Lawn Service for twenty-two thousand for Community Park, ninety-nine hundred for Harbor Point Park, and five, fifty-five hundred for the downtown area, mowing an average of forty-four times a year. So the recommendation from staff is to award to Cornerstone Lawn Service, assuming all of the background information checks out.
Is there any question from council? There, Ricky?
I just have a question. That is not just mowing, but the edging, weeding. It's weeding and edging. And also weed killing. Okay.
Does this involve any trimming trees or anything?
No, the trees are still, we've been contracting with Jeff Steckler out of Rockport, who does our Newberry Park trees and our trees in the area.
Still, any questions?
No, I'm good.
What is the favor of the council?
I just need to let the council know there is round three that is posting on Wednesday in the progress for the Pelican Cove medians and Lighthouse Lakes area.
Do I hear a motion for approval for items seven A through G?
Just say.
Just say. Oh, my apologies. Seven A.
Well, I make a motion that we approve Cornerstone Lawn Service for Community Park, Harbor Point Park, and Downtown.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Item B is a publicized bid for windstorm services. Right now, the city pays approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for just windstorm. And that's because the city is in the Tua Pool. We have not gone out for bid or not solicited bids in over a decade in the windstorm pool. We did solicit bids. We received actually three companies, but we received a total of six different bid combinations. There is an error that was pointed out today by Risk Resources. The cost of GSM annualized is not ninety-nine thousand dollars. It's actually a hundred and seven thousand dollars or so, a little bit higher than Risk Resources, number two. I have both GSM and Risk Resources available for comments. Our windstorm insurance must be renewed by November the seventh. So if the council passes on this item, we have an opportunity on the twenty-sixth to bring it back if there's any clarification that's needed further. Risk Resources is, okay. Can you, can you highlight the difference in, in the fee? And then Blake with GSM is here and I'll, I'll have him. The difference in, in the email that you sent earlier, the difference between the ninety-nine and the one oh seven, if you could clarify that.
Okay. Council, the, my name is Candy Shelton. I'm one of the owners of Risk Resources. Our proposal of a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars is following the RFP, requested one percent for windstorm deductible. It includes, you may notice our value is a little bit higher. And that is because it includes excess coverage that the city already has in place via another policy. And so this would just include all of the coverage with the same policy. We did include a two percent option in our packet that is at ninety-nine thousand, fifty dollars if the city decides to take on that little bit of extra risk. And the, the competitor bid, one thing that I think deserves a little bit of attention is that it does have much higher deductibles for a named storm. So should, odds are we're not going to get a named storm before March, but should you decide to stay with that, the deductibles could be up to three hundred thousand. And other than that, we, we feel like we really follow the desires of the RFP and the instructions of the RFP. So we're open for questions or for further review if you want.
Blake?
Thank you, ma'am.
It's important to note, I think, no matter who we choose, we're going to change the dates because the way the insurance is falling right now, it requires a renewal period right in the middle of storm season, which is not good. So if we're facing renewal and there happens to be a storm in the Gulf, that's gonna hurt us soon. Blake, is there anything you'd like to address?
I'm Blake McDavid with GSM Insurers. And our bid, we, we offered a bid including, it was for windstorm, we offered a bid that included windstorm in property. And we offered it on a short-term basis because the program that we were quoting comes up for renewal in March. The, so that is a short-term premium that you see up on the board there. An annualized premium for the amount quoted would be around eighty-two thousand dollars annualized. We offered, we got quotes for an increase limit up to seventeen point five and up to twenty-two and twenty-two million. And the twenty-two million quote was one oh six. And that includes property and the deductible is a two percent. So it is a little more risk on the city for named storm, but it is a significant difference in premium. And at a higher budget. And there's, there's, there's a lot of things within the program to help the city as far as disaster recovery services. It includes a, a survey or appraisal of the properties that y'all currently have just to make sure that everything is, we are insuring to the current values and could replace everything this year. Would gladly answer any questions that y'all have regarding anything related. Or if I missed anything, please, please quit that.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's important right now, since I just received an email from Risk Resources, there's an item that remains outstanding that I need to research. I would ask the council to pass on it until next council meeting. Well, I make a motion that we table the windstorm insurance until the next council meeting.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye. This brings us to item seven C, consider enacting an awarding to RFP for vessel for harbor patrol.
Also, same thing. The, we have a harbor master who does not have access to a boat to go out. And we had, this past weekend, for example, we had a boat sink in the middle of the harbor and we had one of the tenants down at the harbor provide assistance to get that person out. Our current boat is lovingly called the Barnacle. And it's, it has almost zero salvage value and it really is not even water safe to go out. We did solicit bids. The bids were off by forty dollars or so. The, I did receive information also on a warranty or perhaps some discrepancy in the bid process just a bit ago. So if council chooses to table this as well, we can provide any further information. That's required. So if council chooses to table this as well, we can provide any further information that's requested. We would be financing it through Prosperity Bank, so it would be a direct hit to the Harbor Fund, hopefully getting that fund to start paying for itself.
What was the problem that was asked, sir?
When Chris's Marine submitted their bid, it included taxes on it, which in a normal course of events, we as city staff would have backed it out. Apparently, Chris was given the opportunity to back that out and provide an alternate bid. I'm checking with the statute as to whether that requires us to start all over again.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we table the, the RFP for the vessel for the Harbor Patrol.
Second the motion.
All of us say aye.
Aye.
And this will be the next council meeting also?
Yes, it'll also be carried to the twenty-sixth. Item seventy is I am requesting the council, one of the council members, or you appoint somebody on the council member, or you appoint yourselves to the Regional Review Committee. There are some important monies in community development block grants, and so it would be absolutely excellent if we could have representation on that committee.
When do they meet, sir?
Mary, they meet once every two years, and it's usually in an area not Aransas Pass. Probably Austin.
Is it for a day a week, or?
It's a day.
Would you like to do it?
So the council would vote to appoint Carrie to apply for membership, Councilmember Scruggs.
I make a motion that we appoint Carrie Scruggs as a Regional Review Committee member.
Fill out the application.
Oh, to fill out the application, sorry.
I second the motion.
All of us say aye.
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 So the application is included in your packet. Item seventy is a request from the VFW for seven hundred and fifty dollars for Food for Veterans Day. Since the printing of the packet, we have had Oxy step up, and they're going to provide the food, and we're working with the VFW on their Veterans Day request. However, the VFW has other needs, and so at the request, I asked Tom to go ahead and come and request the seven hundred and fifty dollars. They would use it for their market days or some other fundraiser that happens throughout the year. As you know, they're trying to replace the roof at the VFW. Tom, anything you want to say?
As you all know, we're a local organization here, of course, with state and national levels. But we're working as, as we get these progresses, I mean, these programs going, like the market days and stuff. The veterans are getting older, we're getting older, and unfortunately, it's getting harder for us to, you know, come up with funding and stuff. So anything that city could do for us to donate anything for this event would be greatly appreciated. Any other questions? Thank you.
So to make clear, this will be used for the veterans, other than the Veterans Day?
It will not be used for the Veterans Day. It'll be a charitable contribution to the VFW.
Is there any question from council? Does I hear a motion for approval? Item seventeen.
I make a motion that we approve the request by the VFW.
I second.
All of us say aye.
Aye.
Item seven F, we had an issue with the posting for the annexation proceedings that were to take effect at Sherwood Forest. And so we basically have to start the process over again. This action calls for you to cancel and reset the dates of annexation. I do need to warn the council, it will most likely run either concurrently or parallel to the twenty-seven, twenty-five annexation proceedings that you've asked about.
Set of the new date, is that what you?
Yes, we need to cancel the prior set date, and we need to set a new date.
Well, I make a motion that we cancel the prior date and set a new date.
Well, excuse me, the date set forth in the proposed ordinance is in your packet, calls for the dates of December seventh and December fourteenth.
December or November?
December.
December, okay. For setting the dates for December the seventh and the fourteenth of December two thousand and fifteen.
Second the motion.
All of us say aye.
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 This goes back to the advertising and all that that needs to take place.
Correct, it goes back to the advertisement. And so what we'll do now, since you've set the date certain, we'll go out and put door hangers in the area to notify the residents of the new annexation proceedings.
Does this bring us to item seven G, which we consider not the request for city funding submitted by Mr. Oliver's Martial Arts Academy.
Is Mr. Oliver here? Mr. Oliver requested five thousand dollars for the youth program that he is running out of the Oliver's Martial Arts Academy. He has submitted his nonprofit status, and his application is attached.
Everything look good on it, correct?
Everything checked out, yes, sir.
Any questions from council?
Did it give a detail of what programs he's going to be using it for, or?
Well, his martial arts curriculum focusing on discipline and positive reinforcement is what his application says. Martial arts training that will reinforce life skills in a positive, safe, and fun environment for all individuals. Given an opportunity to learn, train, and participate in martial arts environment, building healthy bodies and bringing forth fitness awareness. Making sure the students are always learning, sweating, and smiling.
Did you approach him on the alternative that you have posted here?
I have been speaking with his representative, Sandy Riggs. I have not received any confirmation of either or.
Okay.
It would be great if Lighthouse Lakes could be one of the adopted areas by the Martial Arts Academy.
Sure.
It would be absolutely great. And I would venture to say it would probably be a little bit more than what they're asking here.
I know Matt does a good job with the kids and stuff.
I agree.
He does.
All of his nonprofit items checked out. Checked out with the state number verified.
Well, I make a motion that we approve as just a one-time gift, right?
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve from the funding for five thousand for Matt, for Oliver's Martial Arts.
Second the motion.
All of us say aye.
Aye.
This is going to bring us to item eight A, considering that on aquatic center repairs. Sylvia?
Hi, this is another one of those. We fix some leaks. It's kind of like putting your finger in the leak, and then the other one pops through. That's basically what has happened in the aquatic center. This last year, we put over three hundred thousand dollars in repairs, and additional leaks have sprung up, and our pumps have long outlived their useful life. There's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of immediate that is required to address not only the, the pump and the leaks, but also the, there's a roof repair that is required. The caustic chemicals in the pump house have caused that roof to leak. If that roof gives way, there's more than, there's an additional hundred thousand dollars that will be required in the pump house. So the roof and the pump and the leaks are an immediate. We did budget forty thousand dollars and can probably carve out some additional from the aquatic center budget. It may mean fees go up by a dollar. We're going to try to make that not happen by attempting to stagger our hiring. However, that's still a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund that will have to be absorbed somewhere else.
If this passes, what's the estimated timeline on unit repairs done?
Within the next forty-five days. There's some lead time on the pumps, they have to be ordered.
Right.
Normally, pumps of this caliber are for, they're called knife gates because they chop up all kinds of chunky stuff that's usually for sewer. These are specifically for water. So we've got a little bit of lead time from the manufacturers, but you're looking at about a forty-five day repair period.
And when they do the installation, they're going to give you a full sheet of their, the testing and stuff of their balance of the shafts and everything?
Correct, correct. What's not included is any hydrostatic testing that's going to be required as part of the repairs.
Are they going to use old piping, or is it there, or are they going to replace it?
They're going to have to replace some. I, I, this is one of those, you don't really know what you're going to find until you get in there. We've identified the sources of the leaks, but that doesn't mean additional ones. You know, again, you put your hand in the dike and something else opens up.
This is not just a repair of the wet end and just throw it back together, just replace the old thing, correct?
No, this is a replace, correct.
The pump and motor, or just the pump?
Correct, the pump and motor. And they're expensive, the pumps are...
Yeah, I know.
The, the lowest is forty-six hundred dollars. Well, the, the valve, and that's only one, we have three. So in the next year's budget, we'll put in. I mean, the plan was to put in some money in operations for continued maintenance and repair. Forty thousand dollars, we thought, would kind of try to get it to go that way, but...
Are they going to go on the same foundation, or they have the Portland, New Concrete Foundation?
No, they won't. At this point, not that I'm aware of, but again, won't know until they get in there. It's important to note that these valves and things are only supposed to last ten years, and, and they've, they've exceeded their useful life already, and we've not had a regular maintenance program or replacement program.
Do we have one now?
We have a maintenance program in place. We, our maintenance person now is a, is a plumber. So there's, there's a skill set there that we didn't necessarily have before, but like the roof at the, over the, the pump house, that really should have had consistent maintenance so it doesn't get to the point where it's at today.
Sure.
Didn't we replace a pump on that at one time? Or I know we did some major repairs on the pool.
There are some major repairs that happened about six years ago. I am investigating the warranty period because a lot of what you repaired is already broken.
Down, look into that and see, because I know it was quite a big, it was a pretty big change that we've had to pay on that.
That contractor has a lot of open litigation against it right now.
I wonder why?
So we're, we're investigating how much is actually recoupable under maybe any kind of warranty that would have been given. It's very difficult, even talking to the roofing person, because of the, the environment that it's in, it's very difficult for anybody to give us a long-term warranty. It really is going to be on our watch to maintain and...
Keep it going, yes. And of course, looking for alternative ways to make, you know, make a profit. I know we were at one time looking at outsourcing the pool, having someone else.
Correct.
And just kind of looking at what we can do to stop the bleeding to the city.
Correct. The roofing proposal is replacing with existing metal or changing it to composition shingle.
Would that save it on it?
It'll save about three thousand dollars.
Well, wear and tear too?
It'll, that's, that's more the concern. It, it's not going to be as pretty. It'll be a blue shingle. It won't be the true super blue shingle, but the wood, and it'll have stainless steel fastener. So there's a little bit more longevity than what's there right now. And the, the metal panels would be aluminum. But again, you're, we're talking about our maintenance program in terms of coating and things because of the environment.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the repairs of a hundred and fifteen thousand to address the immediate needs.
Is that the total?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Second the motion.
That is for both, correct? For everything, the structure and everything?
It is for the sand filter, the knife gates, the roof repair, a shed that's required to keep things out of the elements, and there's a safety catch pad that's needed under the kiddie pool. We have a lot of kids getting hurt. It's rough. It is a catch pad to eliminate some of those complaints.
Now, the knife gates, those are valves you're talking about, not pumps, right? Does I hear a vote for approval? Which is our exact...
In a second.
All of us say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is going to bring us all the way to item nine A. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, mayor. This is item nine A, I'm regent at tonight as a public hearing, which I declare open to take up the request of the city to rezone tracks three and four, block two oh nine, Burton Denworth subdivision, which is property upon which Public Works property is located. Res zoning request is to change from GB General Business and R seven A single-family dwelling to Light Industrial District. It's my understanding that all proper notices have been given and that the planning zoning commission has met on this matter and unanimously recommended your approval for the rezoning. Sylvia, you wanted to address this?
It is to handle all of the public works overflow, the new equipment, the new storage sheds that are required. The property is landlocked, so the uses to that property were going to be limited, and there is a large ditch at the back. Alan Samuels has purchased or made offer to purchase the property adjacent to us for a use that really wouldn't be compatible for anything else other than what we're proposing. The use that Alan Samuels is proposing is a high-traffic athletic entertainment area. Alan, you, I don't know who's... Are you? This is the opportunity to speak in, for the case.
Well, I was going to ask, is there anyone? How many, how many, excuse me, just a minute. How many of you folks are opposed to the application? Show, raise your hands if you would, please.
We just want more information.
Okay, well, just, are there, are you ladies also opposed to seeing behind you?
She's with us.
Okay, all right, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Kindavater raised his hand as being opposed.
All right. Go ahead.
I own the...
Your name, please.
The Aransas Bay Argent State.
Your name, please.
I'm Debbie Jacobs.
Okay, Miss Jacobs.
And out in the park, which is right next door to the five acres. And that's, that's going to change from, from what it was though when we bought the, the property and built the park on it. We would just like to know what is going to go in there? And is there going to be noise? Is there going to be any smells, or? In our department, aid sites right there.
Right.
Similar to what's going on right now in the public works area. There, there's trucks that come in and out. It's going to be a storage area. There'll be some police impound vehicles in that area. There'll be some lay-down areas, and there'll be some equipment stored there. So there will be noise coming in and out. We do have to screen it, we have to follow our own ordinance. It has to be screened, it has to be landscaped. We can't, light or noise pollute you, so...
Because we've noticed since the brush has been knocked out that we do hear a lot more noise. It's the dog pound and just a lot of the noise there. So that's our concern because we've already, this is a manager, Kathleen. She's there, I did not live there.
We, we would screen it with a, a solid screening fence. I don't know how much that would help with the noise. Right now, you have a, just a hurricane fence, right?
Well, no, there's no fencing there. There was kind of a...
Okay, gotcha.
If you will. They took a lot of that, well, I took about a hundred feet of that out, which I was disappointed because it didn't treat, you know? They could, I would, I thought they could have left a little bit of rain down there. But in the past, the dog pound has been an issue that the residents and they're called about probably the most times.
For barking dogs?
Yep. Depending on the way the wind blows, actually, and that's a difference. And the new... It's really done a good job of trying to evade that, you know? But they have to put it out sometimes in the north, so... But they have to put down sometimes in the morning, so we think extremely more notice will now than our sound barriers.
Right.
So that's, that's an issue there. And then if there's going to be a lot of noise, I'm assuming the city is going to own again building business hours.
Sure, in business hours, but if we have a, if we have a line break or an emergency in the middle of the night, the trucks will be, the trucks will be in and out.
But what was he saying about...
Excuse me, ma'am, if you don't mind speaking into the mic, so...
Okay, so what was the, I missed the deal about the high-traffic sports center or something?
There is a proposal by Alan Samuels in the works right now for a athletic facility in, right next to Public Works in that area. We've also been approached by a developer right next to the Alan Samuels property for a multifamily complex. So that area is, because it's on 35 and the development that's happening in that area, there is going to be a lot of traffic and noise. And it's, the further we get along with water, for example, that developer is going to have to extend a water line. So as soon as that water line is extended, the person next to them will now be interested, and that's how we start to piggyback.
I think we're most concerned about what's going to be on the backside of the yard you're putting in now.
Of Public Works.
What's going to be to the east of that, which is the back five acres that the park probably intends to develop in the near future? And what impact that, what's going to be there and what's going to be when you put it off already? Because that's going to be the line for us. I mean, that's going to be on the property.
Is there any way we can plan for the lay-down areas to be the buffer zone so that the noise, okay. So the lay-down areas for any gravel or those kinds of things can be the buffer now. The noise and the trucks will be closer to 35. But you, you still, you know, unfortunately, will, there's going to be some traffic in and out of there. We do have to screen it, and we do have to landscape and light it, so I don't know if that will be an issue as well.
Well, I think the lighting thing is a good thing, but, okay, so how soon, okay, here's the question I have. How soon will the fencing go out? Because there's 100 feet or so there that is extremely annoying and noisy at this point. If it's going to take a while for the city to go in and do a, you know, a screen fence, I mean, what is the timeframe?
I don't have an ETA, but if you exchange information with Mr. Saldana, we can sit down with you and give you the complete layout plan and work out any items that maybe could help alleviate some of the issue.
It's kind of desperate for us. We've waited and bought the fencing, but I mean, it's, yeah, that's kind of an issue, you know, so, yeah, so timeframe would be...
Okay, okay. Well, if you guys could sit, and I don't know, are we in a desperate position to have this rezoned? Could it be tabled to the next meeting? Supermajority? Because it was a unanimous planning commission, it would take a supermajority, a majority for you to move it to next council meeting date.
Well, I'm thinking more, is there any more opposition? Because I'm thinking if we can sit down, you know, with our city staff and just kind of review your concerns. You know, you've heard some from Sylvia, our city manager, and kind of address some of the concerns. And I know that the city will do as much as it can to, not to be a, create a burden, a bad neighbor for you guys.
Well, it's a high-end RV park.
Sure, I understand.
And we have 160 souls aboard, okay, and we don't want to...
Sure, I totally understand on that.
And they will complain.
Right.
Their houses are wheels, so it's really...
He says it to move, right, yes, no.
They're unhappy with what's next door.
Well, if, you know, if you want to table it tonight, you can and let, let them get with these, with the city staff and whatever and work out these problems. And then come back to you at the next meeting. You can do that. Or if you want to go ahead and do it now, you can. But I'm just saying, if there's some current concerns that they would like to address, yeah, they can certainly do that. Did y'all, is there anyone else? Let me, let me ask, is there anyone else present who's opposed to the application?
Mr. Kindavater, you had expressed opposition?
If you could come up and speak, please.
My name's Eric Kindavater. I wouldn't want to too, anyway. My question, what you said about impound law, are y'all going into record business?
No.
This has nothing to do with that.
It's the seized vehicles.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
No, sir, not at all. No.
All right. Members of the council, have any other questions? Anyone else have anything to offer? If not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed.
What is the favor of the council for item 9B?
I make a motion that we proceed with the zoning request from the city of Aransas Pass to rezone the Public Works property from GB to Light Industrial District.
It's GB and R7A?
GB and R7A, Single Family Dwelling District to Light Industrial District. And just encourage the city staff to keep the business, work with the neighbors to make sure that we're not going to be a bad neighbor.
No, but given the development that's coming in the area, that they, they need to be aware of what's coming.
Second the motion.
All the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think... But if you'll, if you'll exchange information, Miguel.
You're approved? Motion passed.
No, we're still going to be a good neighbor. If you'll, if you'll change information, Miguel, we'll set something up for tomorrow early.
Does it bring us to item 11? Eric?
Yes, thank you, counsel. I've gotten a little behind on introducing new employees. I had two. One was not able to make it tonight. But Tabitha Penny, she's also, I believe, a new resident in town. She's one of our dispatchers. That's her in the back. You can step up and say hi.
Welcome, Tabitha.
So we're glad to have her. This is Tabitha, everybody, and... Don't pass out. We got EMS here, though, first responders. But that's good. Thank you, Tabitha. And just to point out, I will tell you, we've had two or three prior to her filling the position she is in right now that could not make the cut. It's a very difficult job to be a dispatcher, probably one of the most difficult in law enforcement for us in this area. So she is doing an outstanding job. She's getting close to getting cut off under her own, and we're very pleased to have her.
Good, good, good. I think that sets the tone for a lot of what our, representing our police department, they call him, dispatcher to me.
Yeah, that's the first response you get, so...
I, I would remind counsel that adopted budget has two additional officers, an additional dispatcher, and three fire quarters.
And so the next item, the next item that I had for you, counsel, is just the regular updates. And Sylvia had asked and requested that we put in another area there on complaints, so we included that as well. I'll just brief through it. Total calls for service, 2,200, which was down from last month. Traffic stops, 258. That's significantly down for a multitude of reasons. We had a lot of training during that time. Citations are down quite a bit to 89, same reasons. Violations cited, 118 down. Arrests were down, good thing. Juvenile attentions were up by one. Code enforcement was down to 44, but staying strong and steady. Now, with the new staff complaints, we had a total of five complaints. Two of those complaints were from external sources. One of those complaints was unfounded. The other was substantiated and addressed with the staff members. External totals were three, internals were two. And how we derive at an internal complaint, it's from supervisor audit or oversight. They see something, reviewing videos and stuff like that, and they get addressed. Of course, those were founded complaints because they were caught by supervisors. And just to point out one thing, some people feel like complaints aren't being addressed. An informal complaint gets an informal investigation, meaning if you file something, you don't put a name and a writing, written statement to it, you might not get the conclusion. But I will guarantee you, every complaint that we receive gets looked into, no matter what. There have been times when the external complaint is unfounded, but we find other issues in investigating that complaint that we address, whether it be for training or another area that needs to be addressed. We also changed it up, and I don't want to go through reading all of this, but I sent it out. And the public can get a copy of this as well. But I have each division supervisor now reporting back to me on their highlights within each one of their divisions. If you've had time to look over that or you have any questions, we can share that. There is a lot that goes on in the police department, and I felt that it was really important to kind of highlight on some of those things because I don't want you to think that we don't have nothing to do. We stay very busy. I'm also looking at, I'll probably start publishing these online as well, since there's quite a bit of detail. We'll push this one out. As far as police department stats, that's all I have in that item. The next item that we have is council member Hyatt had asked, and the council had inquired about doing a survey for wreckers and the vehicle storage facility, what the general consensus was on having that storage facility in town or outside of town. I spoke with all of them directly, except for Mr. Kindavater, because we had his feelings that were expressed during the council meeting. There's email with a lot of details to it. The general consensus is that I think the competition is healthy, basically. Some people are for having a vehicle storage facility in town, others are not. But I will tell you that from talking around to wrecker services, even in Centon area, several wrecker services provide their wrecker services for communities where they do not either have a business or a vehicle storage facility. In fact, the Kindavaters do that themselves with their services to Ingleside. There was some question brought up, and Roadrunner Wreckers shared this concern as well, that we need to follow the ordinance as far as having the wrecker services follow what the ordinance says, being in town. All services that are on rotation right now have their storefront in town. The way we interpret that rule is that, you know, the business is in town. Where their storage facility is, we can consider that business, or we, it can not be considered, you know, that direct business according to the wordage in the ordinance. But all of them have a storefront in town. When I spoke with Frank Lamas, he had expressed his desire if the city would approve it. Apparently, the city did not approve it, but he would like to move his storage facility out of town. And he said he would be willing to even clean up that area where it currently is, if the city would let him move it out of town. I don't think that's, that's a bad idea per se. But according to the way the ordinance reads and everything, the way we interpret it and imposed it by code enforcement, BNT had to go through a vetting process of two to three weeks before we even considered putting them on the rotational. They had to get up to speed on some of those things, and they worked directly with Officer Brake in doing so. But like I said, the general consensus, it's mixed. Some say, yes, they should have their storage facility in town. Others say it doesn't really matter, or no, they don't, it doesn't mean anything to them.
So as an alternative, the staff recommended a perimeter restriction. So if we're going to allow folks to have their store, their storefronts in one place and the storage in another, perhaps put a perimeter restriction in the ETJ or within 10 minutes travel time or something.
And we're, we're doing this just because of the customers having to drive long distance to retrieve it? Or is it consent, non-consent? Is that what we're looking?
That was one of the concerns about if the customers have their vehicles towed, the distance they would have to travel to retrieve their vehicle.
And, and one of the things that did come up, too, is I, I know that you got to go over the ferry, go to port A if BNT happens to be that non-consent toer. But when I talked to BNT, I think they towed the vehicle. It was an impound for two days. The guy had to pay, I think it was, he said, just under $200 for that whole thing, you know. And there, there have been complaints in the past, people paying for an in-town tow, you know, $400 to $800 for an in-town tow. So, you know, it, it's a total value thing that I guess you could look at. I'm not in the business, and I don't purport to, to know all the ins and outs of the wrecker service. But I think that the competition's healthy, and if the city does want to regulate it, there are probably other areas that we'd like to look on as well. Bring the local guys together and help us devise an ordinance that kind of works and does not really restrict the free enterprise that's in place for the, those businesses to come into town.
Right now, at this particular point, we don't have an ordinance amendment or anything in front of you. If council so wishes to ask us to go further, we'll put an item on the next agenda for your particular vote. And I think we should start with a roundtable of the local.
Or maybe a, two agendas down the way. It can take a little while.
Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
No problem. You're welcome. Thank you.
Right now, as the ordinance stands, everybody's good.
Everybody's good. The letter of the ordinance is not followed to the T, like the spirit of the ordinance. For example, we got, we had our open records request for permits, to see a list of permits that are issued. We don't currently issue a permit to the wrecker service. That was never being done. We are doing the inspections that are needed. Code enforcement does that, but we're not hand-delivering a permit. And one other thing, Mayor, they said, I think last time we looked at it, this was like a few years ago, the requirements under our current ordinance on, in some areas don't even meet the level of requirements that TDLR through the state puts on some of the wrecker service. So they're, they're old, lesser requirements than what are currently imposed by the state.
Is there any other question from council? What's the favor of the council, item 11B? I mean, C.
I guess we need to probably revise the ordinance or look into updating it. Is that what you're...
Then we'll bring an item to council on November 2nd for action, for you guys to give us directive with responses and results due in the latter part of November.
So does, Mr. Hyde get a second to look into that?
I second.
All the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it bring us to item number 14, city manager updates? Sylvia?
Mayor, two important updates for the council. We spoke a little bit about at the prior annexation proceeding, that the 2725 annexation is right on the heels of the Sherwood doors. Those contracts are due at the end of the year. So we'll be bringing council some information on that. And then the other is, staff is currently researching a possible amendment to the code of ordinances regarding term limits for boards and commission members. Right now, we don't have any. We have some commission members that have served on boards for very long periods of time. It's probably time to reopen some of those appointments to the public at large.
And when that's made available, hope the public takes advantage of joining these boards and committees.
The other thing I needed to remind the council, the charter revision committee, I have not received a full contingent. So we're at the point of the mayor's alternates are going to make up the board. So I don't have any applicants, and we're going to, the council gave us directive to proceed.
Did you get mine?
Yes, we, we were looking for... Yes, we, um, we were looking for nine, I believe, seven, nine?
As long as we get an odd number, we should be good, correct?
Correct. Okay.
So we're gonna move forward with what we have, or what's it do?
Uh, I'm gonna take a poll and then, uh, get with Mary and give you a response in the AM.
That's it, Sylvia?
That's it.
All right. Let's go and bring us to item number sixteen, executive sessions. Item A, city council will may recess into the second session to discuss the following items pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code. Item A, five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one, consultation with the city attorney over harbor lease and with Richard Palmetto, DBA Underwater Services Incorporated. Item B, section five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one, be deliberations regarding legal matters on current litigation. Item sixteen-C, section five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one, be consultation with the city attorney regarding contemplated litigation. Item sixteen-D would be section five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-four, deliberation regarding personnel with the city manager.
Uh, Mayor, on item A, um, been asked to move that to the twenty-sixth of October.
What was the reason for that?
Uh, one, that's, I think this was a missed post-in, we've informed the applicant that he would be on the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Like I said, we're gonna, right now, have eight, eight oh seven, we're gonna close for executive session. For everybody that came out, we appreciate y'all coming out this evening. For the ones that don't stay, y'all have a safe trip home. The ones that do stay, bear with us, we'll be back out hopefully soon. So, y'all have a good evening. Y'all more than welcome to stay.